Yep, Mr. Aaron. All right, we're in the Old Town Council meeting for May 3rd, 2017. You're the superintendent, it's Congress Room 1A, Maple Street. I'm going to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, followed by moments.
Pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One moment of silence, and use it as you wish. We are making the announcement in the course of the Mass General Laws that we are taping this meeting. Anybody else? There's nobody else here, so nobody else is taping the meeting. All the comments today, we have none. The council responsible, assuming we don't have any. And then, orders of day, we will go through 5A Financial Matters, number one, a fiscal year 18 general budget discussion.
So, I think I can start with a couple of clarifications. One is that there was a request as to whether we need a public hearing for water and sewer rate, and although we do not, I think, were you there when Jim and I talked about it?
Yes.
That although there isn't one required in the charter specifically, that it isn't a bad idea to just have it as part of the public hearing that we're having for the budget anyway, as a separate item, just something to get them...
Are the waters, we're at set at the same time?
They can be.
They can be.
They can be. So, they will be discussed with the Public Works Board at their next meeting, which I think is the day before or the day after, I think it's the 10th, I think it's May 10th. So, it would be in line with the 23rd, which is, we've already, Tom, you set a notice up for the public hearing, so that it'll be the 23rd, so that we can, then you can adopt a budget on June 1st. So, I can propose, unless there's further, further need for additional meetings, I can propose a budget next, at the next regular meeting, which is May 9th, with any additional changes that you all decide tonight, if you so choose, and then, on the 23rd, we can hold the public hearing on June 1st, which would be a special meeting, it's a Thursday night, we could set the, you all could adopt the budget. So, we'd stay with the end of the timeline, at least.
Anyway, we talked about it, so with what we set up, we're actually moving along the time parameters, and just make sure it's clear on it.
So, that's, that's one item, the timeline, the water and sewer rates. We have both the chiefs here tonight to discuss their budget in greater detail. Would you like to start with that, or Kathy had some questions that were shared with you all? You have the capital plan with all of the items in it. I can tell you that, and I've already told Kevin, Sarah and I have not gotten to the point where we could do the whole thorough five-year capital plan, and the level of detail that it said in the charter, we will have that for you all at some point, but we couldn't have it ready for tonight. So, where, what's your pleasure?
We started with the chiefs, these only waited three hours last time.
Before we get into, I was just looking at the calendar, so you're proposing the public hearing on the 23rd?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that'll, all work well, assuming we don't have any major...
Changes or...
Or major concerns raised at the public hearing that caused this council to want it...
Well, if there are, we can have another meeting if we need to, before the June 1st.
As to more in terms of you, if, if, on the public hearing of the 23rd, some serious concerns were raised, that leaves us a week to address those concerns, so...
I don't see the, yeah, we can turn it around.
I mean, I, the chances of it happening, to be honest with you, most of those public hearings are not...
Well-attended.
So, I would be surprised, I just don't want to find us in a jam, that's all.
We can see that night, I mean, the June 1st date can be set on, on the 23rd, and if we see that there's some major, but I can't imagine anything so major that Sarah and I couldn't turn it around, I really don't. We've got a good support staff.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I would think between the chiefs, it would likely be one of those proposals, possibly the school, school could certainly turn something around if they needed to, and, and the two chiefs have been absolutely great to work with, so I think you'll be all set there.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt, did it...
No, that's not interrupting.
The wheels were turning, and we moved on to another...
I saw the wheels turning, I just didn't know what piece they were turning for.
They were going.
Thank you.
Sure. Thanks for the concern.
Guys, ready?
Yeah, go ahead, both of you.
Do you like it?
We like it.
Tagging.
That's what I'm saying.
Unified, unified commands.
That way, they're both up at the same time, instead of one being first.
I can elbow them over here than back there.
You're talking way too long. So, thank you, Jeff. I guess, I'm not sure where you want me to begin. My budget overall, the initial budget again, was, was within the parameters. My supplemental budget, if you flip through to page, the third page, it discusses the new hires, and a couple of the extra items that are, that are put in the budget. The first, first and foremost would be the supplemental budget to hire four firefighter paramedics in the spring of FY 2018. It's budgeted for right around February, based on the academy start time, get them in-house a little before that, do a little bit of in-house training, get them prepared for fire academy. The next line down talks about some, on the supplemental, it's, you know, it's not only the firefighter salary, but it's their gear, their firefighting equipment, their clothing, the textbook, and some modifications to our station lockers. When the station was built, it wasn't designed for all of the lockers to be the same size, they're small lockers for call firefighters, so we'd have to make some modifications to some lockers, so that's, some of that pricing there. Not listed on the supplemental budget, which is part of the capital budget, is the ambulance, and the entry, if you look back on my, my front line on my budget, actually, the physicals came out of my section, HR took all of that, which is under her purview now, and one less thing we need to worry about, which is great, and she takes care of all of that. My proposal begins with, again, hiring four in the spring of 2018. We would begin 12-hour ambulance BLS service July of that year, with an arrangement with AMR and Long Meadow as far as for our ALS intercept.
Chief, can you just, for my benefit, and probably viewers as well, the difference between ALS and BLS?
In simple terms, BLS is your basic life support, CPR, oxygen, no drugs. ALS kicks it up, they do cardiac monitoring, they can, they can administer some drugs under it with doctor's orders, it's, it's more of a advanced life care.
Thank you.
Yep. So, we would, we would operate a BLS service for the, for the full year of FY 19, and throughout the year, we would hire four in the fall, and four more in the spring, in exactly the same way we did the first round, and at the end of that year, we would go 24 hours for a BLS service.
At the end of FY 19?
At the end of FY 19, correct.
We would go 24 hours, how many votes?
I'm sorry, what?
How many votes, 24 hours?
How many total?
Yeah, how many?
Five, five-man crew.
Yeah.
20 total.
Okay, so we'll go a 24-hour fire and EMS.
Fire and EMS, yep, yep. And I don't, I don't, I'm not looking to make this a profit center, but this running the ambulance is going to help us fund a 24-hour fire department. It's not going to, it's not going to pay all the bills, but it's going to, it's going to take some of this thing out, once it's up and running. Again, it's, there's some initial costs, in the startup money, and to get it up and running, but it's, we will have the guys in the building, trucks out the door, first truck's out the door, and everybody knows when it comes to a fire, that's, that's the most important part. And then, at the end of, the goal would be, at the end of that year, to, so fiscal '20, we would start ALS service for 24 hours at the end of fiscal '20, which, talking with OEMS and one of the guys involved with the licensure, the timeframe works for him, AMR, dealing with AMR right now, they're, they're agreeable to the, to our concept and our plan. We still need to sit down and hash out some contract terms, but they're agreeable, they're willing to work with us to do what we are. We're not the first community that has done this and worked with them in the past, so it's something they're used to.
By work with you, you mean to phase out of a full...
To phase out and to...
Arrangement with them.
To stay, but they're going to stay around for a while, they're going to be doing the ALS intercept, they're, they're still going to be doing non-emergent transports from the nursing homes, there's quite a bit of that going on, so they're still going to have a presence in the area. They're still going to be involved with Hampden, which I would imagine, between East Long Meadow, once we're up and running, between us and Wilbraham, you know, we could, we could assist Hampden a little bit also, so. The next line down on my supplemental is firefighter cancer prevention. Cancer's huge in the fire service these days. Councilman Madison can kind of talk about it a little bit also. It's, every year, it's surprising to hear people coming out with cancer, and one of the best ways they found to, to prevent cancer is to always clean your gear. Right now, the East Long Meadow Fire Department has a household washer that, for the most part, are donated pieces of equipment we get from firefighters who are changing their stuff, or friends of firefighters. They, they make and recommend a gear extractor, it's, basically, it's a commercial washing machine. Working with Denise, you know, we decided to try, you know, to get this plan rolling. It also includes buying some spare Nomex hoods. Firefighters get out from a fire, their hoods are covered with soot, 99% of the time, the guys are sweating, they just take the hood down to here, and that dirty hood is impregnating their neck with all kinds of carcinogens. So, this would be a plan, a policy that would be put in place, where we'd have a bucket of clean ones, they come out, they go to rehab, they take the dirty one off, they throw it in the bucket, which doesn't get used again that night, it goes back to the firehouse, gets washed, and goes in a clean bucket. And if the gear washer allows us to quickly wash the gear faster, right now, we can only wash half a set at a time, because you take it apart, and you can only wash one firefighter's gear at a time. Here, we'd be able to wash three or four at a time. We don't have spare sets for everybody yet, but we do have spares that, when somebody's gear is being washed, they can, they have something to wear. The eventual goal would be to buy a spare set for everybody, but at about $3,500 a pop, and the AFG grants not supporting second sets of gear for people yet, although they know it's important, but they're just not supporting it yet, so.
Have you tried for an extractor in the AFG?
I did a couple of years back, and it, I had some other stuff on there that came through instead. I, I did a Mideast, the $25,000 last one.
Yeah.
And I also tried for, I got, that's the year I got my compressor, so it didn't...
You got one, not the other.
Yeah, I got one, not the other, right.
Where is, I'm having trouble finding the cost of the extractor. Where is it?
If you look on...
It's on the second page.
It's built into the building supplies, it doesn't, it doesn't say what it is, it's, if I remember right, Eric, it was 10.5 for the extractor installed.
Got it, right here.
Yeah, oh, there it is, yeah, yeah.
So, the total request is 16.5, but 10.5 of that is for the extractor?
Yeah.
There we go.
And the last, the last part of my supplemental is for an administrative assistant. Not that I'm complaining, but I'm the only department of roughly 30 employees currently, but it doesn't have, I do my own payroll, I do my own bills, I do my own, and there's, there's times when I don't have time to do the important stuff, the policies and procedures, and trying to keep that stuff up. And it's something Sarah and I have been talking about for the past couple of years. I think she's a little nervous, because my payroll goes down, you know, most of the times without errors, but, because I'm the one looking at it, but, which I still will be.
Do you have revenue projections?
I did on my original, on that big letter that went with the plan, with the original budget of a two-year plan.
I think it's, the letter dated March 3rd.
March 3rd.
There isn't a subsidy, an update to that.
If you switch to the second to last... Second to last page of that, it talks about surrounding communities, Long Meadow, Wilbraham, Agwam, where they, they're covering, and Long Meadow is pretty fixed right now at 5,500 of their budget, so roughly 25% of their budget is supplemented by EMS.
25%?
25%. And if you go to Wilbraham, or Agwam, or where, it goes up from there. I tried to, I did try to get some of the Medicare, Medicaid breakdown from AMR, and it's held up in corporate right now. Any, any financial information coming out of AMR is really difficult to get, any type of...
Corporate.
Corporate.
Oh, corporate, got it.
Corporate, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Corporate. I do have, I do have the info for, it's kind of funny, not funny, but it's kind of, it works out to about an average of $450 to $500 a run, that Long Meadow and Wilbraham. All the towns are very similar about how much they're getting, and currently, we are, if you look at the, the projection on the bottom, EMS runs, we're, EMS runs, 1,939 is, is actual numbers from the police log of EMS runs, compared to some of our surrounding communities, we are, we're up, we do a lot more, so...
More senior care living centers in this town.
But if you look at the...
That's a lot of runs.
I understand, but if you look at the demographics for the population, we are right on, we're equal, we're within a percentage of each other for each of those age brackets, for the 64 to, 65 to 74, we're 9.6, Long Meadow's 9.3, and Wilbraham's 10.3.
Yeah, the difference is, a large part of our percentage is in the longer care facilities, whereas that same age bracket, in some other communities, may still be living at home. The ones in the care facilities are not as good a health, typically require more...
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
No, it's good, it's good for the revenue, actually.
Right. And then, if you look at, if you look at 75 and older, Long Meadow, or we're 10.3, Long Meadow's 11.57, and Wilbraham's 9. So, it's weird how it changes, but, and then, if you go to the under 5, some of the other vulnerable ages, we're all within a percentage point of each other, it's, it's...
How are you proposing collections under this?
It's going to be through an outside service, an agency, and the fee is really reasonable, it's not something that, I mean, we would have to go up the bid for something like that and make sure we, but I, you know, I have plenty of...
Three or 4%.
Right, right, and I have plenty of advice or support from surrounding communities, you know, you know the support that we have with the area communities, and even, I mean, I even got numbers out of East Hampton, Mass., you know, just something similar. The difference with East Hampton is they don't put their, their revenue isn't specifically allocated towards the fire department, it goes to the general fund, but when the fire department goes for something, or needs something, it's always remembered that they put in $800,000 or more into the general fund every year, so they, they work with them well, so...
So, the only thing I'm really, I'm a little bit more confused on, though, is, is I understand what your FY 18 budget request is, essentially, a $1,081,000 more, correct?
Which, are you looking at that letter?
Yes.
Throw that letter away.
No.
Don't throw it away.
I'm sorry, it's late. Okay, then where should I be?
Look at the back of page 5 of...
Of your, your original request?
Not the original request, dated 4/4.
Yes.
If you look, there's a, there's a longer piece of paper there, might be smaller, actually. It is smaller, yeah.
It's very busy.
It's, um, right. All right, if you look at the highlighted items, FY 19 goes, so FY 18, the total request is 1, 1, 1, 5, 8. FY 19 goes to 1, 7, 30, and then FY 20 goes to 1, 9, 37.
And refresh my memory, where do you expect to be in ALS operation?
FY 21.
Okay.
Because we're going to be operating 24 hours after FY 19.
And your current, if none of this were taken into place, what would your, your budget request be? I guess, I'm trying to figure out how much more.
Yeah, I understand. If nothing, it would be $888,000.
So, you're looking at 300,000 round figures?
Yeah.
Somewhere in that range, I mean, ballpark, we don't need...
Right.
Exactly, and then, then the next year, we, we jump up to...
600,000.
600,000, 700,000.
Yeah.
And then, we're, we're pretty much over a million, we're 1.1 million above...
Where we are now.
Okay. I guess what I'm looking for is where are, essentially, are the revenue costs offsetting that?
They're not yet.
No, no, I, I get that, I get that it's going to take some years before that comes in.
Right.
Ultimately, you're going to be somewhere around a $2 million budget, somewhere in that range.
Correct, yeah.
Right now, it's an 800 and some odd thousand dollar budget, correct?
Right.
So, we're looking at a...
Almost nine.
What's that, what?
Yeah, almost nine, yeah.
Call it, call it nine. Call it nine, so we're looking at a $1.1 million increase, round figures, ballpark, right?
Right.
And I, and I get the increased service, what I'm getting at is, where we keep hearing the, the revenues...
Right.
What are the offsetting, what are the dollars?
My prediction for, my prediction for the revenue would be, would be 25 to 30%. So, if we predict 25% on a $2 million...
So, 500,000.
500,000. So, to increase fire protection with the ambulance service for 24 hours, it's a 6, it's a $600,000 bill.
So, that, okay, that's the point I was trying to get to.
Right.
What is the net, and I understand in the years in between their startup, I mean, I get all that.
Yeah.
But ultimately, when it's up and running, I'm looking at for what is the net increase budget, when that's offset by...
If I look at, if I look at the surrounding communities, and Long Meadow being the least, at 25%, but we're doing more runs, potentially, we can make, you know, better than 25%, but a low, a low swag would be 25%, $500,000.
So, we're looking at the revenue all going to the general fund, Denise?
Ah, yes.
Okay. Try to get it other way.
Yeah, I was going to say, we didn't have that conversation.
Where else would it go?
So, really, the point I was trying to get to is, what it comes down to for us, there's years of, of costs involved, but after that's over, the, the startup costs, if you will, so the capital layout, but after that's over, we're looking at about a $600,000 increase, round figures, ballpark figures, to increase to 24/7 with ambulance, in-town ambulance. So, I guess the question that comes down to this council, is that a good use of the town's money? I'm not asking for an answer, I'm just giving you things to think about, right, that's, that's...
I don't need to think about it, I think it is a good use of the town's money.
I, I...
No, I, I agree, I, well, you're, you're talking to a fire and EMS advocate, and one of the...
What is our coverage right now? How many hours right now are we covering?
Seven days a week, 12 hours a day.
Okay.
Right. And, and I'll speak from experience, since we started the 12-hour shift, we've caught in some fires during the day that would have been...
Disaster.
A lot worse if we weren't on duty. I mean, there was one on Labor, Patriots' Day last year, and it was, at the farthest end of town, it was a garage fire, and that night, that family was back in the house. If that came in on Patriots' Day the previous year, when 50% of the apartments in different directions, and who knows who's showing up, because we were off-duty that day, because it was a holiday, that, they wouldn't have been in that house that night, they wouldn't have been in that house for another six months, and they were back in that night. So, it, it's working, the fire on Maple Shade Avenue, textbook fire, daytime fire, we were on duty, even though we showed up with three guys and myself, the fire, the fire ground operations got started, mutual aid was started, there was backup from the call department and the off-duty career guys, we had, we had trucks there, second apparatus was on scene in about 11 minutes, first was on scene in less than five. I mean, that's, that's how fires go out, that's how lives are saved. So, to have, in my prediction, for 75% of the calls during the day, during the 12-hour shift, is true, I mean, it's, it's holding up down a little bit, but still, it's those, it's those nighttime fires that you get, that are going to be the scary ones, that, so, and I don't need to tell you the business, but, you know, I think this, I think the system's working, I really do.
No, I, I would agree with what's, I advocate for, I mean, and I guess that's the point I was trying to make, it's, I don't want to be little...
It's not really, it's not really that expensive where you get your services right there.
I guess that's the point I was making, is with the offset of revenue, it's only a 600, and I'm not trying to say $600,000 is a small amount of money, but by comparison to the cost of running the apartment, it's significantly less. We're going to get eventually on the topic of the civilian dispatches, and I'm certainly an advocate for that as well. My only concern that I want to...
Yeah, huh?
The only concern that I want to, I want to throw out there, that, I think Sarah and Denise have done a fantastic job of growing the services, proposing a budget that grows the services, still doesn't use the full levy capacity, and maintains a reasonable tax rate. I'm thrilled with that, I think it's a wonderful job. What I am concerned about is the increases, and the two increases are primarily police and fire, which is why I'm bringing it up now, is consuming any of the benefits we have had from paying down the debt. And at some point, we're going to have to look at some major capital outlay in terms of our infrastructure, in terms of buildings particularly, and I'm not sure that we're going to have the room within the budget, because we're chewing up any of the debt we've paid down, and I think the Debt Advisory Committee has done a good job of demonstrating to us that we're, we're on the low end of where most municipalities of similar makeup are, which means we have room for debt, but we don't have the revenue if we keep chewing it up to pay that debt, if we chew it up in the budget. That's my only concern. So, I'm a real advocate of these things, by all means, but I'm also concerned that we're, we're making what decisions we're going to have to face in the future, and in the not-too-distant future, very difficult because of that, chewing up that revenue. Is that making sense to you guys?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I didn't know if I explained it very well.
I think our debt is coming down further in the near future, what, a couple of years?
2021 is the last payment of the debt exclusions, and so, that's, that's a pretty big chunk, but a lot of that is debt exclusion, like I, like I said, but we do have some debt service coming down over the next few years. I, I understand those kinds of concerns about, you know, then you don't have, if you're using it now for police and fire, because it's built into your plan, that then, you then don't have that in order to bond other things in the future to pay that debt service.
Yeah, and that's, that's my concern, that we're not making plans for being able...
I get it, yeah.
Having to do some of those capital expenses, and if you look at, Kathy had requested the list of capital items, and I didn't look, there's a lot of some real big items on there. We can't keep putting them off forever, and so, I'm a little concerned, I want to support these, I really do, but I also want to see us planning for the future, and that, I'm not seeing us doing so. That's where my concern is coming, that's a balancing act that I'm trying to figure out.
It is certainly a balancing act, and one that we, we really struggled to make sure that we were addressing some of the capital needs, but also making some progress in areas that it really seemed, it's coming to the... that it really seemed... It's coming to the council for your decision on whether you think it all can be done, but at the end of the day, one of the things we need to do in the future, in addition to addressing capital, is be more aggressive with our economic growth, you know, our economic development. And that's something that I've spoken to Rob and McDonald about already. So we're going to be focusing on some of that as well, because if you wanna continue to spend, you have to get money in somehow. And I think the package machinery project is a perfect example of, some of that is happenstance. We can't go finding some of that stuff, but we can do a better job at selling the community.
Marketing ourselves, yeah.
Yeah. So I think, you know, it's certainly a caution well-taken, but I think we, you know, we're a community that's, probably this is the time for some of these services to be addressed. Hasn't been addressed in the past, and I guess it, you know, is something that should've been looked at maybe a little sooner. You know, instead of taking a big jump all in this year, I think I talked to, maybe it was Kevin or Kathy or somebody, saying, gee, this is a lot of big stuff all in one year. But last year, you were struggling with the government, so you didn't really do progressive budgeting, I don't think, last year.
I'd like to think that it's reasons like this why we're here as a council.
Correct, I agree.
Folks recognize that the town needs to grow with the needs of the community, and we haven't been doing a good job of doing that. But I think that concern for the growth also includes maintaining our capital needs. And that's where my concern comes in. So I guess what I'm throwing out there is, I'm in favor of, and I know we haven't gotten to the dispatch yet, and I'm interested in hearing what you have to say, but I'm in favor of both of these projects. Just wondering if we should jump, bite them both off in one year.
I kinda think they work, they coincide with each other a little bit. I mean, if we're gonna work aggressively toward package machinery, you're gonna bring an influx of more traffic into the town, which could be traffic accidents, it could be fire, it could be requirements for EMS. You're building more structures in town that need new equipment to be able to make, you know, make sure those facilities are safe if there were fires at those. So in order to, you know, you're gonna grow the town, we gotta be able to protect it at the same time. It seems like short money to me to go from twelve hours to twenty-four-hour protection. And, you know, if businesses are gonna be running around the clock, I mean, like American Saw is an example, right? Those guys are running, are they running twenty-four-seven? So I think we gotta protect, you know, we gotta protect the town as they work through, you know, second and third shifts. And nobody knows the exact plan for package machinery yet, but this is a great tool to lure them into town. I don't wanna use the word lure, but be able to say to them, we're gonna be able to provide... The service is adequate for the growth of the town. So we might have to put this first and figure out if there's a little bit of a deficit in the end with what your concerns are, is how are we gonna address it, or where are the additional revenues gonna come? But I'm in support of the twenty-four-seven.
And the same could be said about a variety of services, whether you're talking about the senior center, whether you're talking about education, whether you're talking about, all of those things go into your community as a selling point to draw in that community. So I don't argue that point. I think it's a valid point. But if you look at public safety in its general, which probably represents normally, what, eight, ten, maybe twelve percent of our budget overall? Something along that, that line. And we're looking at a million-dollar expenditure, a million-plus expenditure in the fire department budget, another million on a ladder truck, so there's two million on that. Another couple hundred thousand on a dispatch program. So we're getting close to two-and-a-half million dollars on an area of the budget. It's normally ten percent of our budget, overall budget. And I'm not saying none of it's justified. I'm not saying, I'm just saying I wonder if we need a better plan to phase it all in.
At least the fire trucks are amortized, right?
It is, yes, yes. But it's a commitment, it's a commitment over five years for a million bucks.
And certainly, the message from the council originally had been for the fire chief to be very aggressive in a plan for the ambulance service. And he and I pulled that back so that it isn't a big hit just this year. It is, you know, progressive, what, three years?
It's a three-year, right?
Three years, yeah. So we are sort of phasing it in. We're not taking the whole hit this year. That was done purposely. We could've, the original plan was two, right?
It was two years, right.
And is the plan still to go to pursue a used ambulance, or?
I'll let...
Or something different?
The plan is to see what the market looks like then, to either do a used that fits within the amount or to be able to do a lease of a brand-new one, but we have to see what's available at the time when we need that, but that we would stay still within that same allowed amount. And in answer to your question, it's, in FY seventeen, police and fire combined were six-point-eight percent of the total budget. And with this proposal from both of these gentlemen, it would be seven-point-three percent of the total budget, so a small increase percentage-wise.
Do you, and this is just, is there a number out there for what surrounding communities are police and fire?
That I don't know.
Do you remember from your days?
Yeah, Long Meadow was like, I think, fire, EMS, emergency management, police, dog officer. What they grouped in public safety was twelve percent.
So the only thing we're missing is a dog officer.
And a dog officer is not a big jump.
Crossed guards.
That's under, that's under...
Yeah. And I think it was like memory now, for what it's worth, but I think it was around twelve percent.
So marketing new homes and new, people look at the budgets and they say, public safety only gets seven percent of the budget, where Long Meadow, you can't build a new home, basically, there's no more room, is twelve percent, eleven or twelve percent.
Shays effect wants to build a house, it's gonna burn down.
New houses don't burn down.
And to be fair, I think as families, whether they're young families or middle-aged families who are just look in the market to relocate, think about two things, especially a young family. The quality of the schools, and they want a community that's safe to raise a family in. And I don't think you can do that. Or let me say it a different way. We've done that on the fire and safety side in a less-than-complete way for many, many years. And I would be willing to bet that in the last year of real estate transactions, particularly the young families, excited to be able to afford a home in East Long Meadow and raise their kids in a wonderful community, but would be incredulous if they truly understood that it is not a full-time, full-service fire department. And I think the time has come where that's long overdue, and I would absolutely, yes, it's a big bite, but in perspective with the figures you just gave, Eric, that's money that's well-spent on both sides, police and fire.
Jeff can tell you better, but we've gotten phone calls on a Monday morning. Hey, I called the fire department last night looking for just a little bit of information, and you guys weren't there. Like, we just bought our house six months ago, and you guys aren't there at night? Did you check the schools before you moved to town? Oh, yeah, great school system. Yep, it says we are a combination fire department, you know, and we explained the whole thing to them. And they, but it's, they don't, they don't understand the system.
No, and it's certainly...
The reality is, people don't check.
They don't.
Right, they don't.
Emergency services before they, they check schools, they check parks.
However, the expectation as they're paying their tax bill is that that's what they're getting.
If you look at a Zillow, a Zillow listing for a house, it doesn't talk about public safety.
It does. It does rate the schools, but it does not speak about public safety. But all that considered now, it's two-thousand, almost eighteen in terms of budgets. This community is long overdue in getting both of those services, so I...
It's short money.
Support it. It is, it's small money.
Short money for double the service. And again, moving forward with other projects and everything else, it's hard to attract people when you don't have that level of protection, so.
I would also speak to the extractor that's proposed. The mere fact, I didn't know you didn't have one. The mere fact that we don't have one is disgusting. This is a basic element of firefighter safety. I can't believe we don't have one. That's... Yeah, that needs to be, that's a must.
That, to me, goes without saying. I mean, you're placing employees at risk of being exposed to medical or health situations that, in most cases, are irreversible unless...
Right.
...comprehensible.
Here's the other part of that, even if that's not enough, and that's plenty, in my opinion. But here's the other thing. The average firefighter gear, when you suit them up head-to-toe, you're looking at nearly four-thousand dollars a man now, person. I shouldn't say man, a person now. And if we're not maintaining the gear properly because we're not extracting it. Right? We're spending four-thousand dollars on gear, and we're not gonna get the same usage, the same number of years out of it because we're not extracting it. This is a no-brainer. This is a must.
When I first started, and I'm sure when Eric first started in the business, it was a badge of honor to have your gear smell like smoke, right? I mean, it was a bad, you never washed your helmet. Well, now, it's policy. Your gear needs to be clean. First of all, we're walking through people's houses for smoke detector activations. And if you're smelling like smoke and you're getting soot all over you, they don't want that. But second, we're coming from home most times at night, and the guys are putting the gear on. If they're putting dirty gear on, now they're going back home, they're climbing back into bed with their wife after they just had their smoke-ridden gear. And it's just, it's not, it's not acceptable practice anymore. It really isn't, and so...
The byproducts of combustion today, particularly with all the plastics introduced in the modern...
Completely different.
It's all carcinogens. It's all carcinogens, no.
This is one of my favorite songs.
The administrative assistant? Here's my thought on that. I'd like to be able to say, Paul, you gotta do without something this year, but the reality is, if he's gonna spec all this equipment, and he's gonna take on an ambulance service, and he's gonna start hiring all these people, he needs help.
Or you're gonna be there twenty-four-seven.
He has to hire somebody that does the same quality of work as he does, though.
Well, that's why Sarah's gonna help.
I was gonna say, actually.
I don't think we can have, I know you said it graciously, but if this is the one department hanging out there that doesn't have clerical support, we have to fix that. And again, in the scheme of a fifty-nine-million-dollar budget, that has to be done.
Yeah, there are two departments, just to be fair, there are two departments that do not have administrative support. The LCAT department and the fire department. However, the fire department is significantly larger, and with all of these people, it would be unrealistic to expect Paul to be able to do it all.
And the fire chief should be using this time better than, you know, doing payroll and stuff.
So with all that said, I guess at the end of the day, what I would say then is, it seems like the consensus is to support the fire department.
I can just speak for Joe quickly, because he called, but I couldn't be here tonight. Wanted to be, he wanted me to express to everybody that he is in, after reviewing everything, that he looked at and everything, the homework that he did. He's in full support of both initiatives from the police department and the fire department. So that being said, there's just, I mean, I think we're all in agreement, but Joe is another first person who wastes time on board with the same thing.
Okay. The administrative assistant, nineteen hours unbenefited?
Correct.
So I guess I would then support it. The only caveat I'm throwing in there is, I think we've just expressing the thought that we need to plan for longer-term capital and that kind of stuff. Because this is just one of many needs in the community. We're gonna be faced with a lot of these as every year passes. We still have to think of the longer-term capital stuff.
Yeah, I'm glad we're starting with this one first because it's imperative.
It is. It's public, well...
I think we all feel the same way. We all feel the same.
And this one does, through the ambulance service, have the capacity to be somewhat of a revenue stream to...
Offset.
Generate.
I think that's what makes it the most appealing, is that we're not absorbing a million-dollar addition. We're absorbing somewhere in the neighborhood of half that, or sixty percent of that, which makes it more appealing. Obviously, we don't see the revenue stream for three or four years, but...
But it's there, it's embedded within the vision.
Part of the print, yeah. I think, actually, there's something that, there's a bit of news that I probably can share with you all in that Sarah has been appointed the director of finance.
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you. In doing that, that in itself is another way that we'll be addressing some financial stuff. She and I talked today. Our investments, maybe we can get better return on our investments. Maybe there are fees that we can drop, certainly as the procurement officer, as part of that position. There will be looking for cost savings. We haven't done a lot of that because we, you know, I came on board and just sort of hit the ground running with a lot of this stuff. But there will be certainly some other financial gains by having a director of finance and a town manager looking for, you know, purchase services that are much more folded in so that we're doing things in bulk. And so we'll be, I think, I think a year down the road we'll have a better idea of some of our investment side, some of our economic growth side, and some of our cost savings as well. So we certainly take the comments seriously. I think it's something that we're all looking at the same thing.
Point of information, we're adding another gas station shortly too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's closed.
It's a twenty-four-hour gas station. There you go, another twenty-four-hour business. Does anybody have any...
We got a local tax on gas.
Any projections on when that'll be open?
I'd see contract of trucks that are good, so.
Yeah, they're working. The landscaping's almost done. I bet you any day now you'll see a sign go up. That's my guess.
My last question is, are we gonna have to pay a cover charge for the entertainment?
Jeff and I are gonna go sing it.
Yeah, can you sing your presentation?
So we want to watch the police chief.
No other questions of the fire chief?
Excellent, good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Excuse me, so you already looked at the budget, I think, previous to meetings, the regular budget? I don't know if you have any questions off of that?
No, as I remember.
You had the twenty-three under, twenty-three saving in that question there? I think that was the only question brought up. I think we explained why we were twenty-three thousand underneath the last years.
Real question is, what did I do with it?
It's a supplemental staple drive in.
Yes.
Original, right?
No, I just gave you the supplemental to make.
New, just usual.
There's a different one.
Because we pulled in on the figures.
So this is the disregard the previous one?
The second page, the second page of the new one is dated to, uh...
First page?
Seven.
Yeah, second page.
Start date, seven-one-seventeen. On the right-hand side, it says five-two, ten-ten AM. That's the latest. I just gave it to you.
No, I'm sorry, last year's, not, last week's the one we just, we just referred to.
Oh.
No, that's Paul's.
It was inside of this budget, Eric.
The whole budget budget?
I'm sorry, here it is. I gotta read it. Dated March twenty-ninth.
For the budget budget, yeah.
The regular budget, right. So you were looking at a one-percent increase, right?
Yep. You had questioned the non-salary expenses down twenty-eight. I think that was the only question I heard from the council at the time.
Yeah, I think I was just, more of a concern that we weren't in effort to make the one percent gonna impact operations. There was definitely no other question.
It was a non-salute. I think we moved stuff around, took some money out of gasoline, and we got rid of some kind of, not some kind of, we got rid of how we do our law books and stuff. There was another five thousand there.
Right.
So between tweaking here and there, it came up to twenty-three.
We've gone to electronic for some of that research material instead of...
Mass laws online versus the book form, which tend to be very expensive. We looked at copy are expensive. We looked at vehicle repairs, we're a couple thousand off of that with the anticipation that the newer cars are not gonna break down as much. And so, you know, some of that stuff is subjective, you know, depending on what goes on, the weather and stuff like that, wintertime. And gasoline is, you know, but that's where we figure we made some savings. We could feel comfortable with those numbers.
We certainly drilled down deep into the budget.
So then I looked over the supplemental real quick. For me, the question isn't, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but for me, the question isn't if we're gonna do this. The question is, which proposal?
Well, the supplemental budget itself is a dispatcher supplemental to budget.
Dispatcher supplemental. I'm sorry, is it more? Sorry, is it more, I missed?
The, the latest proposal is the second page of the one that was handed tonight, not the, not the cover page, but the page after that, which has 192, 0, 0, uh, 607.89.
Okay, what's the 186 proposal?
186, um, I should have not, because the chief and I talked about it and Sarah, um, the difference there is having three part-time, if you look, there's three full-time and then underneath that, there are three part-time. And, um, it was felt after really looking at it that there was not that much savings and easier to manage was the reason.
Most looking at other communities, you know, some people do the part-time dispatching, but in talking to one of my counterparts, he felt that doing a lot of part-time dispatchers, you don't retain, and it's just a turnover of, uh, employees and they're not, they're not well adverse to the nature of the job because in this particular case, the third page, they're working 16 hours a week. And the goal is if you're at 40 hours, if you have, you know, more hours you can put into one person, they're more proficient to be in that job. So instead of spreading, the first page spreads out the, um, 48 hours over two people and the third page spreads it out over three people.
Got it.
And basically, it's the same amount of hours and we, but it's just less persons on the first page.
So then on this first page with the 192, that person would have benefits.
And that makes a difference.
And that's the difference.
So you're recommending the proposal?
The 192.
With the 192 and not the 186?
Yes, correct.
And this is, um, numbers that are probably, you know, we take a look at, if you look at the, the training's pretty spot on, if you look at the, the recovery overtime, we went 25 dispatcher to 75 patrolmen. So, I mean, there's some, um, you know, hopefully, we wanna prepare for the worst case scenario and not have to come back to you and say, this is gonna be an issue now during the course of the year. We think that, um, the, what's the calculations here, based on what I've determined through a couple other departments, that's pretty accurate of what we get for replacement rate.
So certainly, this is, this is, we're totally putting, it's all in for civilian dispatch and not at this point going to regional dispatch. The reason for not going to regional dispatch is that it just is not ready yet.
Coming together quicker.
It, it's, I mean, the, the signals that we're hearing about, especially the systems side of stuff.
The technology, IMC, the CAT operation.
Take a while. And, and if we rush it, we could do it using dual systems, you know, then at some point you have to convert and it's, it's, yeah. So, um, we don't have a solid plan and, um, I think, uh, I think Joe Ford is the one that told me, we need, the town needs to stop kicking the can down the road on that. So, um, the civilian at least gets us up and rolling if at some point we do, um, get to a regional. I can't imagine, and Ryan pretty much said, if we get it, it would probably not be up and running until 19, right? 2019?
Probably, yeah.
There was a conversation we had in the office.
That's right.
I don't know if it was this morning or yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah, yeah.
It was all the guys going together.
He was, yeah. So 2019 is.
A big portion of that was technology.
Technology driven.
It's driven by.
Exactly. It's technology.
And being the newest one is challenging with that aspect right now, location, before the technology equipment.
They've got to build out a.
They gotta build out another room.
Server room.
And their servers in and everything else. So, I mean, that's not something that's gonna happen August 1st or September 1st, that's down the road, the ways in. One good thing about this is if we go to civilian dispatch, we can see how the employees work out, kinda like we do with Denise.
So this, this looks like a, um, this looks like a, a funding proposal for 12 months?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, did you guys look at that? We had talked about it at the last meeting.
We did talk about it.
Because you didn't think you'd be able to get the hiring done?
We actually had a conversation.
Yeah.
And we did think that we would be able to get the hiring done as long as we get approval, like sort of from the council, that this is the direction we're gonna go in, that piece was approved, pretty confident that they can get that done by the time the, the budget goes through.
So if the budget, if we know now, and we have HR, we have the luxury of an HR department now, so she's already done the salary portion to check out, to see where the salaries should be, which is something that prior to that, I would have been doing on the side of my desk, so I couldn't say, I'm gonna do that while we're still doing the budget, or the chief was gonna do that while we're still doing that. So the salary piece is done, she's getting the job descriptions, so they will be ready to go. And if on June 1st, the budget is passed, we can advertise for that right then. So it might be staggered over a period of weeks after July 1st, but, um, it's certainly realistic that we can get something together before the end of the summer. So to start cutting up the, you know, year by month, I talked to Sarah today and I said, well, we could do 11 of 12 months instead, that would give us the month of July, but we probably can get some of them in, in July. So now you're taking half of it. It ends up, what, $11,000 or something?
Yeah.
You know, so really, there isn't a huge cost savings for the small amount of time that I think we can probably get it up and running.
That's fine, I was just.
Yeah, no, I wanted you to know that we did, yeah, absolutely was.
So the other thing I just throw out, and I failed to fill this out on the fire chief's proposal too, that we have to figure, you're probably looking at more like somewhere around a $230,000 expense when you figure in employee benefits.
Benefits, right.
So just making sure you recognize that, that's all.
Oh, yeah, it's, sorry, I'm a stretchy and purple, approve, add this much?
And how much did you come up with?
Well, I said add health insurance, add this, add this, and I put the numbers in.
I just added, I added like 30%.
Yeah, and that's, that's a pretty accurate, yeah, that's a pretty.
Yeah, so. So I think I said everything, basically, I was gonna, I'm in favor of the proposal, I've been in favor of it for a long time. I don't think it's an over absorbent amount of money, I think basically you're talking about 192, call it 228,000 with the benefits to not only have the dispatchers, but you're putting another cop on the road. And that, to me, is one of the, the bigger benefits of the whole thing. And I'll be quite frank, if we're gonna train these dispatchers as it's outlined here, I actually think they'll be better dispatchers than our officers are.
Well, they're trained for it, yeah.
They're trained for it, that's right.
And that's what they're signing up for.
Right.
Now's a good time to make that transition because the, the training and requirements for the job are changing. So rather invest money in training in the officers that are currently doing that job, we're better off allocating that money toward hiring, um, you know, the civilian dispatchers. And I agree with these guys 100% too with the, um, with full-time versus part-time because I can only say, visiting some of our, our neighboring communities, that it's a different face every time I walk in the building. They've had a big problem keeping part-time dispatchers. They're, they're a month, they're three months, they're gone, you know? And we don't wanna be, we don't wanna get on that road, so.
Chief, have you factored in, um, or is there any to factor in, any monies from 911, particularly toward the training?
That would probably be reimbursed through the 911.
Okay, so some of this, um, for example, you have, uh, let me see, I gotta find it here. Some of the training monies that are in here at, uh.
I think that's, the 2100 dollars ones?
Isn't that time up, down the bottom?
That, that one is time off.
Yeah.
The training was, uh, well, it's 1100 dollars.
And when 911 reimburses, are they just reimbursing tuition or they, do they do time as well?
They do time as well.
Okay, so potentially, there's some payback on, the, the, the total expense potentially won't be the full appropriation.
Right.
That there'd be some, some money back on that from the 911 commission?
Mm-hmm.
And I know you can't count on it.
Right.
You do it, yeah, I get that, right? But that was another point. So potentially, or most likely, somewhat less than this.
Yeah, it'll move the error the other way, so.
So just quickly, I wanna go over one thing, we're all set with the fire and the budget?
I am, I'm happy with it.
Yeah, do we need to take a formal vote on that or?
No, because we're adopted budget as a whole, I just wanna keep track of where we are as far as the hundreds, and now we're all set with the police budget.
Were there any other supplementals, chief, that we missed?
Well, yeah, my other, yeah, my supplemental outside the dispatch, like the budget supplemental.
Yes.
So Denise asked me to break it down in different formats so that you could understand, you know, we could take it in a la carte if we thought was necessary.
Okay.
That's your decision.
So what would?
You should have, you should have one in there from.
Your original.
Yep, April 6th. You should have one or maybe.
Back to the, I'm sorry, back to the original packet?
Right. So it's not the very original, it's made some final changes.
Right, so it should be dated April 6th though or no? Uh, yes.
It's a total 31,970.
I have.
That's, that's the other request, 1,970?
All right.
All right.
I'm sorry, where is?
All right, so were you looking at the last page?
You can look at mine if you want.
The document dated what?
So don't go by the document date, go back, you read this color page here.
Go to the original.
Should be about 31,000 total.
So behind the original budget request, there's a supplemental that is civilian dispatch that is no longer valid. And behind that is the, the other supplemental, which is for, um, a records clerk.
Yeah, and I can explain that to you if I did.
We talked about that last time we were here.
Right.
There's a public records request. You don't need to beat that to death, we already talked about that.
I didn't change the date on the top, but that's what's confusing, yeah.
Do you have any other question about the 31,000 for the registered?
No.
Not at all, good.
But that's, I'm sorry.
Police budget is good.
Mm-hmm.
It's self-determinating.
So the doc, the document we have is, is 46,630, but it's been changed?
I modified it, yep.
Okay.
31,970.
Do we have a modified document?
I don't know if one was passed out.
I don't think it was passed out since then.
No, but that money is in that one, right?
We, we can email that to, to you to look at.
The breakdown's in that budget.
But it just reduced a couple items.
That's the clerk position already.
It has the clerk position, it has, um, some money for drug investigations, for some shares, um, a new bicycle.
Chairs, these aren't gonna be sitting down, are they?
Nope.
A drone and some training for the drone. So the biggest difference between the 40,000 that you have there and here is that we had put 10,000 in for updating policies and procedures and to, to use an outside company, and we're instead going to see how much we can do internally and maybe use some of the community compact monies to, to help with that kind of a thing. So we thought it better to take that out of here. And then we also had about $5,000 in overtime, um, but that we think, given the change, that we think we might not need that, so we took that out. And if worst case came to it, then we could always come forward during the fiscal year to say, hey, we're running into an overtime issue, but we don't perceive that as being a problem, you know, unless there's a major catastrophe.
So you're, you, you currently have a records clerk?
Yes, she's a part-time, she's not full-time.
Right, I can gather, I didn't, didn't realize that.
You should have an explanation on that, one of the pages in there, attribute a letter.
Yeah, there's a text, I mean, a whole.
There should be some kind of.
I recall the last meeting, I think we had a whole conversation on this.
I think we had a, I don't know, it was a whole conversation, we did have a conversation, yeah.
I'm mad about the civilian thing, but this, this particular piece of overtime.
Yes, since the last meeting, we did change it slightly.
So that's. So that's 14,000, wrong figures, 14,800?
Yep.
I mean, that's increased traffic coming into town.
200, 200. I'm sorry, 270 dollars?
Well, I had to put it in because I can't, I can't put it, I'm not authorized to put it in. If I give raises, then you guys will all be in trouble of the budget. So I have to go, with that raise, I have to put into, uh, into the supplement. And even though it's ministry.
No, I'm just chuckling, so when you hand them out, what are they gonna do, go to Dunkin' Donuts?
Well, no, no, I know that, but I can certainly put more in there, but I'm trying to differentiate, I'm gonna start a procedure to step, step differentiate the people that put 20 years of crossing guard in this job versus a new one, they shouldn't be paid the same.
The same, right.
And if you want me to chunk up a big difference right away, I'd be more than happy to do that.
No, 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 I just.
Yeah, I know, I know, I agree, I agree with all. I've got a starting point and I'm working off that as always next year.
Yeah.
Hopefully, if I'm still around.
Which was your overtime?
Of course, your overtime.
So the, the, um, drug, additional drug investigation training, part of a 40-hour mandated training, help me out with that?
Um, that's not part of the 40-hour mandated training. You must, are you looking at an old one, sir?
The 40 hours is the one that we removed.
All I have is the old one, yeah. All I have, I don't get a.
The 40-hour mandate is the one we removed.
Oh, I see, I got it, so those two are not, okay, never mind, it's not on the new one, got it? Okay, so then, just additional drug investigations, I get it, never mind, then that doesn't require anything. So the only other question I have really, quite frankly, is, um, well, two. 1,500 dollars for drug money, what is, how does that differentiate from the investigation money?
That's, that's different.
That part in the salary line? The top one?
That, that.
And the bottom one is actual money to, you know.
Cash.
Purchase the drugs to use here.
It's fine money.
It's fine. I can.
Oh, I, I get it, okay, never mind.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep the original budget to where you guys requested it at and then give you an idea that what's, what I may be lacking.
I was just wondering what it's for.
But what I may be lacking my original budget, I wanna make sure that you understand that that's not the original budget and it should be, but I'm trying to be mindful of your first request to keep it within the 1%.
And then the only other one I have, I understand the bicycle, help me out with the drone.
The drone, that's something that's up and coming in technology for municipalities. Certainly, the private sector's taken advantage of it in all shapes or form. Probably Columbia Gas is taking advantage of it on their pipelines and stuff like that. Other pipeline companies, it might be taken, it might be cheaper to fly a drone versus a helicopter over their pipelines now. But in, for municipalities, I've, this 4,500 represents a drone that would be shared by other departments in town, I just put it on my supplemental budget to.
He lost, he lost.
You draw the short drone on that one?
Yeah, I lost, I draw it, I'm just being a good guy.
You're answering my next question.
Yeah, so instead of taking.
This is outside of just one.
That's LCAT.
Chief, that was originally an IT request, right?
Yeah, it was, IT, everybody can benefit from it, not just the police department, but instead of taking 1,500 here and 15 nickel and dime all the departments, it's 4,500 dollars, if you guys see fit, we'll lump it together.
For a town drone.
Right, for a town drone, but.
And we have two officers already, that are already trained in it, right?
Yeah, you have to have an FAA license.
License to. Do they have a license to...
Some of them are getting pretty technical.
It's not a big, big deal, I understand, buddy.
But certainly the fire service, who you guys liked very well tonight, would benefit from it too.
Good point. Alright, there we go.
So then, essentially the total...
We do what's a while.
Then, for the police department budget, we're looking at outside of the one percent normal, but in the supplemental is roughly two hundred and twenty-eight, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'm totally good with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, for a total and budget of two million five, uh, two million nine five three eight two four. If you...
Congratulations. Sold, next.
They did a great job.
Yeah, thanks for your effort.
Seriously, they did a great job. All of them, thank you very much.
Door's always open.
Yep.
Thank you both.
And I go for a ride in a truck.
And you can go for a ride in a truck?
I want it. That's right.
Can I borrow the truck?
Can I borrow the truck? I couldn't make you borrow the truck.
So right now, we're police and fire, Dr. T.
Okay.
So, we're good there.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you both.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks guys. And thanks for hanging around last week for three or four hours. Appreciate you hanging around last week for three or four hours. I got a little saying.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night, guys.
Um, I think the other piece that you really did not talk much about is the capital.
And just one, think quick.
Oh, education.
Because the DPW was well within the parameters that we had set anyway, so we know... Do you have any questions on the DPW budget at all there?
I didn't, I saw the email had alluded that I had questions and I didn't recall...
I don't think we had...
I don't think it was on DPW.
Because they were underneath, they were...
They were well within.
They never went over.
They came in at one percent.
Yeah, I think the only questions that had come up related to the enterprise fund, really.
Right, which we answered last week.
And I think we discussed in detail last week, so I think that was the only surprising, but everything else, they kept it well within what had been asked.
So fire, DPW, do we need to do education? Education, LCAT, right?
Yeah, give LCAT the enterprise fund, I had presented that last week.
That one's done, right?
I didn't know if there were any questions from it because it was your first time.
Unless we wanna kinda hit the ones that we can kinda breeze through, if we're all settled, then we can just go and then we'll know what we...
What document are you working off, just so I can follow up?
Honestly, I'm just wor, no, I'm just working off of, I'm working off the notes from what I had, I just kinda wanted to go through the departments to see where we are.
So what if we...
I have some of the old budgets too, Eric, so, like these, I just put, we're all handling on the top.
Yep.
So that way...
What if we took this document and we obviously don't have a choice on the sources, so if we went to the general fund uses, and obviously the whole top...
That was my, yeah.
That we can start and then go through, we have questions, let's talk about it.
That's the one I kinda just hit.
And then, yeah, and then we can build...
Yeah, then it's a little more organized.
Well, that was similar to the format of town meeting, when we would go through the budget, we hit every line item.
Yeah, exactly.
Kevin, do you wanna copy that? I mean, it's in here.
I was looking for mine.
Yeah, it's, it's easy because it's pretty clear and...
Any, any, um, changes in the house budget?
And that's the one you want, just, that's what we talked about previously. I think that's last I know of.
And that is already reflected in here, right?
Uh, in that printed one, no.
It's not.
No.
Alright, so we can go...
Sixty-five to the good.
Here, we're on this one, right? General fund uses in a big document, right?
Then I have a little bit more, the good two. These were the two.
If we started at...
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's alright.
And then...
So town council we're good with, right?
Uh, well, Kathy had had some questions.
Well, I was answered, yeah, I was absolutely satisfied, yes. The additional amount was more for the use of the council as it related to conference attendance.
Yes.
The only question that I had on that is, did we want to see a small sum of money for any other expenses that we might incur throughout the year? Or does the town manager have, and I can't imagine the town manager's gonna have a budget with that much, say we wanted to hire the Collins Center for a small task or something, or something like, do we wanna put in, in the budget, a small expense account? I don't mean big money.
If I may?
You know, a thousand dollars.
Um, so that was one thing that Denise and I did speak about. For minor items such as, let's say you needed office supplies or things like that, we incorporated that into the clerk's budget for those kinds of materials that will be provided to all of you. For something like, if you wanted to hire the Collins Center, then it could be looked at at that time to see if we wanted to do a departmental transfer, if it should go directly to whichever department that it might be related to. Or we do have a reserve fund that we put into the budget, as you can tell, and then you could essentially do a reserve fund transfer as well, if it, if it was needed. But that way, then there was an extra baked into the regular budget and it could be used wherever needed.
And you have to, I mean, we would come here and people would know what we're doing.
Yep, exactly, so it's not...
We have extra buddies, we have transparency pieces.
Exactly, and that was our thought, was to keep it as transparent as possible.
That's fine, I just, it was just a suggestion, so I'll put a check next to that.
Alright, town manager.
I mean, that's contractual.
Right, pretty much.
Pretty much.
Appropriations?
Yes.
Well, one sixty-two.
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's my salary, it's Marge's salary and, you know, and then some mom's expenses, it's not...
That's what I mean, it's all, yeah.
Yeah.
Personnel.
Right.
Pretty much.
Appropriations committee is pushed away, so it's...
Correct.
Reserve funds.
And that's what I had just referred to.
Now, do we need this?
So there are two methods of thought with the reserve fund. With this form of government, you don't have to have a reserve fund because you do have the avenue of town council to be able to go to on a more regular basis than a town meeting. However, it does enable you to set aside and plan ahead for any unforeseen items that you might want to address, that you wouldn't want to fund with free cash, or wouldn't be planning to fund with potential free cash, because as you know, you really shouldn't be planning anything with free cash. So it is allowed per mass general law. Some municipalities in a similar form of government do still put a reserve fund, or something else that they call under a different name, but the same kind of purpose. And others eliminate it and then go before their, their town council on a regular basis and just ask from, from there. So we just thought to keep it more consistent with our former...
We always had, right?
We always had.
Yeah, but we also had a form of government, meant twice a year.
Right.
So it was an ability for the selectmen and the appropriations committee to appropriate money for unanticipated types of things.
But it really came in after June thirtieth.
Well, let me, let me just clarify a little bit what it can be used for and what I've, in the past, it wasn't called reserve fund, but it was that same kind of thing. We've had exceptional storms where we've had to dip into some kind of money for some extraordinary, a roof that got blown off or something and...
But that's what stabilization is for.
You can use...
But, and, or, an extraordinary legal expense, we get sued for something and we, you know, it's outside of what we would normally budget for legal. Unanticipated, we don't have raises anticipated in any of the lines here, so we'd have to get that money from someplace for, for raises, that would be one of the places that we talked about, correct? So you don't wanna put...
For bargaining unit raises?
Um, well, we have people outside of...
Assume non-bargaining employees, because it would be, you have a contractor out.
Right. And we have a lot of people that have not had raises in a number of years that are now coming and saying, you know, my contract's expired and I have, you know, I haven't gotten a raise in three years. Well, we can't address all of those, Karen just came on board, we have to have someplace, you don't put money for raises in, in a budget and you don't put it in a place where you're saying, okay, we're gonna give three percent and now everybody knows that we're giving three percent because we put that number in there. So there, it's not a bad idea to...
Do some operation room.
Yeah, just a little bit of operation room, I think.
Yeah, I think my only issue with it is money we're raising and appropriating without an earmark. In, in the past, it was, it was really a necessity because of the form of government that we have. We have a council now that meets on a regular basis and we can transfer funds, we can take it from free cash, we can use it from stabilization. I just don't like the idea of taxing people for dollars that really are not earmarked for a specific use.
Well, it's certainly permitted.
No, I understand it's permitted, I'm not arguing it's legality, I'm just...
It's not that we're trying to do something that's not, you know...
I just, it's just an issue I have with it, that I actually believe that it's really not needed and that if it's there, you'll spend it.
And next June, if there is still a balance in that account, where does it go?
Um, just like any other department that hasn't fully spent it, it would essentially be incorporated into the free cash calculation that would be available to use the following here.
For open liability.
Which could eventually go to the open liability. But as I have mentioned previously, you know, you shouldn't, we shouldn't as a whole plan to be taxing more than needed.
For a savings account.
For, for a savings account, kind of item. So the reserve fund, we weren't sure as to what...
The philosophy of the council is.
Exactly, and so we, we wanted to keep it there to see...
How about a compromise, how about fifty percent?
And so whatever the council thinks, I will support either way.
I'm all right with fifty percent, that's fine, because the next day, need more income there.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Is that what the majority of the town council would like?
I'd throw it out there for thought, yeah.
Okay. Then I can absolutely just change that.
So, well, it's two twenty-five, so one twelve would be...
One twelve, I'm sorry.
One twelve, sure.
So the reserve funds.
And then next year, if it sits there all year and it's never used next year, we're gonna evaluate it, right?
Then we'd realize that the, yeah, that the form of government is not, does not...
Right, and in other words, we look at, we look at the last year of it and we say, reevaluate it, right?
I think we're in that position in, in many of these...
Right.
Line items that we have to ride it through and, and then look behind us to project ahead.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question on legal services. What, what goes into that to make that number up?
Can we go in order and get to it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're going in, only because I get all messed up.
Okay.
So we're on to town accountant.
We'll have one of those.
I, I'm both, actually.
We have to have one of those.
I know, she's serving the rule. Anybody got any questions with town accountant?
No, I don't, no.
Assessor? We have to have them too.
No, just why the, why the decrease? I'm not complaining.
We had a TEU member in, that we had budgeted for, for FY seventeen, that wound up retiring early, so therefore when you brought in a new person, you bring them in at a...
Oh, that's great, got it.
Treasure collector.
Now, that's only due to the reorganization, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Mike, legal services, you got a question there?
I have a question regarding legal services. What, what makes up that number? And the reason I'm asking, I mean, we're, we budgeted ninety-nine-three, how would, how would you come about budgeting a number like that?
So thirty-three thousand is for the town attorney.
That's where I was going next, is that...
And the rest, and the rest is anticipated possible labor, labor council. Labor, labor or arbitration settlement.
In other words, Jim's, Jim's salary, if you wanna call it his salary, is included in that ninety-nine?
Yes. The salary's the thirty-three thousand and then there are additional expenses that he charges as well, so the total amount for the general council is more than the thirty-three thousand, but it is all incorporated into that ninety-three thousand figure. We anticipate that as a result of the new HR department, there have been several instances that we've been able to go to our HR rather than having to go to labor council. So already, we're seeing a savings on our bills at things that we're now able to handle internally.
There's been a huge reduction in.
And, and some of the change in methodology that Denise has compared to the previous administration, we've been seeing a significant improvement in those bills, so we felt prudent to reduce our budget by that and we think that we can meet that.
So that one, sixty-three hundred is good.
Yep.
Okay, so that would, legal services then, would that, the resolution of our past chief, the legal fees that we paid for that, would that be incorporated in that number?
In this year's...
The, well, the legal fees, yes, go in there. The settlement that was paid went out of the police department budget, but was funded by the reserve fund.
Yeah, but the representation number, which the firm that we hired that represented our town.
Correct, yes, yes.
Okay.
I can tell you, from, Sarah, she'll back me up on this, but this was an account that was always funded around these same figures and overspent every year.
Yeah.
So the mere fact that we're seeing this not only go down, we're not seeing it overspent and it's going down in appropriation.
It's not spent.
It's a huge improvement.
Well, I, I have a real good handle on who gets legal and I've done, done that for a very long time, so my first question is, don't you have an association you could ask that question to instead of going to the town attorney that we're paying by the hour? So there are a lot of things that are just not even getting to legal to start with and having HR...
And the fact that we have HR now.
Absolutely.
Which helps some of the labor standpoint.
We're not drafting projects.
Bears up the rationale we had two years ago about going to an HR.
Right, right, it supports our upfront expenses right now with asking legal, um, legal counsel, but also hopefully it will help with any settlements and arbitration that have happened before from other things that have gone on when you haven't had an HR to help.
Perfect.
So we're good with legal?
I'm, I'm fine, thank you for the justification.
And on to HR.
HR.
You're welcome.
We know it's a new department, so that's obviously why that's been...
Some adjustments there?
Yep, some adjustments, we moved all of the new hire physicals and all, a bunch of that, all into here, taking them out of the different departments. So last year's budget was our best guess and now we're able to see some in practice and use that to help form this.
Engage with it.
It, it might not still be perfect, so next year, I'm sure it will be more refined since it was only a partial year with having an HR, but it's much more accurate.
It's a work in progress.
Correct.
And it includes the benefits, it used to be.
Benefits administration goes in there now too, that's right.
Correct.
IT? Anybody?
Oh, just thank you for limiting the growth, that's been a tough one to handle for the last number of years.
IT? There were a lot of questions.
Town clerk. I'm sure there were. I'm sure there was.
No, I just, could you just say that again, Eric, I wasn't...
It was just a tough one to get under control over the years.
Understood.
The growth was sometimes very well justified, but it was just unbelievable growth.
Clerk?
The clerk, the biggest change is now that it's been separated, so when you're looking at that thirty-six thousand, that's the FY seventeen budget if you were to look at your town meeting. But when we took the items out of the treasure collectors department to move here, so we took salaries before, we only had the election worker salaries in here.
Right.
Now we have the clerk salary, the assistant clerk and...
Plus all your election workers.
Senior clerk, sorry, I wasn't sure of the title.
Plus all your election workers.
Plus all your election workers. And I, I looked at this budget in detail and I feel that that's an appropriate budget.
Very good.
So round figures, you're looking at eighty-six thousand dollar increase overall to provide treasure, collector and clerk services?
Yep.
The bulk of that being the salary?
Correct.
Additional staff?
Correct, yes. Yep, about, most of that, and then the rest is primarily the TEU increase, the union increase.
Yeah, okay.
The zoning conservation planning inspectors. The Zone and Conservation Planning inspectors. That one is...
A little higher increase than the others, but not a lot.
And I don't recall why, do you remember why?
Well, it's not a big budget, so it doesn't take a lot of money.
Exactly.
To a hundred percent by a lot.
It didn't take a lot. Some of what we did was for the...
The Building Department got folded into that.
Right.
That's what it was.
So the building inspector, so some of the things such as the, I don't know if you've all seen him, but he now is wearing a shirt with the emblem on there. So we incorporated that into here and some additional trainings and whatnot to keep up with certifications. Then they also do have two TEU members that received increases. So the combination of all of that resulted in this.
PVPC?
That's an assessment, that is a...
That, and we received the letter, so it's the exact amount for what it's already going to be for eighteen.
Public health, I know we talked about that a little bit.
Yeah, we just did put this in fire.
Does that incorporate what they wanted to do with the fee structures?
Yes, it does, yes.
Okay, and that's really the bulk of these increases?
So the fees have been increased already and...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean the fee increase. The revenue from the free increases, what they wanted to use it for. We suggested it go into their budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So pretty much the entire twenty-five thousand is as a result of that. And addresses a need for additional inspectors that would be covered under the fee increases.
She can't possibly do all those inspections, that's what we talked about.
If you were to look at the sources in this version, it did not include the revenue for those increased health fees in this printed version. So that's about another fifty thousand to the good. So I just wanted you to all be aware, I had realized after it had already printed and I said, "I'm not redoing again." So it will be in the next one that you receive.
And she had just really just gotten...
She did.
It was last month, I think, that a lot of fees were due.
Correct.
Mr. President, can we take a three to five minute reset?
Absolutely.
Need a vote or just come in?
So we're done down to health, right?
Yeah, down to health.
Well, actually, we can go to education next because public works we talked about.
You just talked about, right?
So we're done with health, public works, and we will start on education when we come back.
Okay.
Yeah, only one question I had with public works.
Yes.
Did we increase snow and ice?
No.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Eric, settle. Let's take a break. Let's go to education, I guess.
So the only question I had on that was Joe had brought up the desire to
Reinstate.
Reinstate two items or three, I don't remember what they were.
Two items, the fifty thousand curriculum renewal and then nine thousand and one dollar to increase the speech language pathologist assistant from point seven to one point oh, would make the position whole, be a point three FTE.
So I know that that was discussed quite a bit at the last meeting and we did just reduce the reserve fund by a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So we could restore those or add those supplementals. And still be to the good, be underneath to the good. The only thing is I want to give Denise the...
That actually changes, just so you know, Eric, too, I talked to Sarah, it's twenty-one sixty-one
The amount?
per thousand with no relief from property value.
Our tax rate.
The tax rate.
Yeah, it's twenty-one sixty-one what, with no relief from what?
With everything we approved, with no relief from real estate values increasing?
Yes.
Real estate revenue? It's twenty-one sixty-one because we had twenty-one seventy-five. With the reduction in the reserve fund, we went to twenty-one sixty-one per thousand.
So reduction in the reserve fund and then the reductions in the Police Department, how we refined for the two supplementals, the net result is a decrease to that.
Twenty-one sixty-one.
Yeah, so it's down ten cents from what we talked about last week.
Right.
The only thing is that Denise, I wanted to, you did not include those two positions in your original budget.
I did not.
And I wanted to, before we discussed restoring them, I wanted to give, for you the opportunity to explain to us why or if you want to. If you want to contribute to the conversation, I...
Well, I can certainly tell you why and it was really to try to stay within the two percent because this is half the budget and, or close to half the budget. And departments that only make, you know, they have small, so you see some of these budgets, two hundred thousand dollars, teeny budgets, and they were able to stay some within one percent, some within the two percent.
Library.
The library, they actually cut a position to stay within the parameters that we said and the council was pretty adamant at what they wanted, excluding salaries, salary increases, contractual, that they wanted to stay at close to one. So to take the biggest budget and not try to keep them to where you said, that was the reason. It still was two point two percent if I recall correctly.
Controlling the subject over here.
It's two-two or two-four, I can't remember.
It was what it would end with if you added all of them.
Two point two-one.
Yep.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, the nine thousand is all that's for salary? The fifty thousand was for non-salary? It was the increased curriculum renewal? So it's not two positions, it's just to increase one to full time?
The only question I had on the curriculum renewal thing is, and I know Kathy, you talked on this a little bit, but I know the AP classes have parameters at the meeting with ranges of textbooks and so on and so forth. What is their plan going forward? Do they, I mean, there should be a plan to replace those books on a schedule.
They do, they have a five-year curriculum renewal plan that I don't have with me. But there is, there is like a litmus paper process that you go through.
Yeah, I just wanted to find, and I knew you had...
And there's a five-year plan.
So I just wanted to make sure there was a plan.
There absolutely is. Each year in their operational budget, they have a hundred thousand dollar line item for curriculum renewal.
So how is this outside of it?
This is an outside of the one, they want it to be one fifty this year. A one-time only is what Gordon explained to me.
Yeah, primarily to the science.
They'll go back to just a hundred thousand.
Yeah, because...
I think this is because they got caught off guard with the announcement from the AP gods. Is it the name is...
That it was going to...
That they're way out of, they're out of sync with their...
And my understanding is those ones weren't on the rotation for another two years was the problem. So that's why it was, hey, do it now.
But they absolutely do have a five-year cyclical process.
All right, I wanted to know that for sure.
I'd also like to throw out that the last, I know the last two fiscal years. So I was, been on appropriations, I don't know how long, too long. But for the longest time, it was rare you saw any turnback at the end of the year from the school committee. We're seeing sizable turnback at the end of the year. The school has been very good about if they don't spend it, they turn it back. And so that to me goes a long way when they have requests like this because they're not just spending every...
Just spend.
Right, I think they spend very wisely and at the end of the year, it's demonstrated that. If you look at the last couple fiscal years, in fact, Sarah's going to give you the figures now. I can't remember years, we got zero, zero, nothing back. And now they're giving back, what do we, since you opened it?
It was two, two fifty, three hundred last year?
Yeah.
That's reasonable, I mean, that's...
It is, and the year before that, it was a sizable, I think it was a hundred and fifty or something like that. Yeah, something like that. So they, to me, when we're considering it that, that goes a long way toward, right, right.
On one hand, maybe, but on the other hand, it's similar to the reserve fund. It's, are we, you know, are we giving them too much if they've, they're turning? And I'm only saying that because where I came from, that was the conversation that we'd have is, why did you ask for so much if you're turning back?
Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it comes down to personnel and turnover.
Yes.
Just like any other budget, people go out of the higher rate, come in at a newer rate and that happens, how many employees in the school department?
Lots.
Four hundred, something.
Four hundred, so that's...
I can personally attest to that in hiring. You have a budgeted amount, you know you're not supposed to be going over and oftentimes you get a younger hire and you save it.
Save money.
For the position you're filling with a younger hire is because an individual's retiring at the top of the scale with an advanced graduate degree. There's times you can save thirty thousand dollars and within one hire.
And I want to remind everyone that the Assistant Superintendent Business Manager of Schools, Pam Blair, she's been there about a year. So there was a lot as a result of her doing some cleanup, instituting some new policies and then there was also some turnover just within the other individuals who are doing budgeting or paying bills and saying, "No, that doesn't meet the requirements." Or, "Hey, we're going to be stricter about, you need to get it in by this time or you're not getting reimbursed if you didn't do it." And so that was held, the line was held a lot stronger this past year than it had been. And that has made a big difference.
That was a big issue at the close of business for last year, right?
Yes.
We thought, we had like some lengthy conversations.
We did, and the year before had been rougher when it was just starting to turnover at that and then last year then, you know, Pam was able to make a big difference and she's doing an excellent job there and I anticipate that she runs a very good ship at the school and that it will continue that, I would bet.
So here's other food for thought for you, Kathy. If the fifty thousand is for books, a one-time expense.
Yes.
And you're concerned with it being raised and appropriate, which again rolls into next fiscal year and the fiscal year after and the fiscal year after, then it's totally appropriate to make an appropriation, I believe, out of free cash for such an item. It's a consideration.
Then you're not building into the budget.
Right, it's not being built into the budget, it's not a reoccurring. So next year's budget isn't built upon that figure.
No, that's a good idea.
So they get the books that they, it solves the problem of the books. It's not a reoccurring every year.
Right, it's not embedded, so the percentage is not...
Right. So it's a consideration, the thought, I'm not saying it's, but if it's, if the concept here and the mindset is to deal with this problem they're faced with and it's a one-time expense, that's a way that, it's not, it's not appropriate to do it that way.
It's a good idea.
I'm in favor of funding the two items, but I will defer to everyone else at the table who has more expertise than that. So if you're saying that is a cleaner way, that does not embed itself, then I...
Refresh me the two items again, one was the books, what was the other one?
To make a point three FTE, speech and language individual.
So it's nine thousand dollars?
The individual's point seven right now.
So essentially then, and I'm also working towards, Denise, towards your, trying to limit the growth. So if the fifty thousand were appropriated from free cash, it's not growing the budget. Nine thousand, that's a recurring, it would have to grow the budget. But you're talking a twenty-eight million, twenty-nine million dollar budget, nine thousand dollars is going to move it up a tenth of a percent. Does that help with your position?
I think so.
So then why don't we... If we can take a, okay, then...
And you're comfortable with that, Sarah?
So when we do the budget, we can also do it, just like we used to at Town Hall, we can, Town Hall, Town Meeting, we can do a warrant article or an article, if you will, to raise and appropriate X number of dollars from free cash, right, to pay for those books and then just include the nine thousand dollars in the budget and everything's whole.
Yep.
I'm good.
Absolutely, that's easy.
I'm in favor of putting this money to good use. I think it's a step in the right direction, but not just for putting the money to great use, but I think it's a step also that's equally important to starting to try to work with the school committee and bridge a gap and start working together more as a team. We're here to support them and I'd like to feel that they're here to support us as well for the benefit of the school and the benefit of the community. So this is twofold for me and I'm in support of it. I do have one question though, and it goes back to when we were talking about legal earlier. Is there like a line item for legal in their budget? And how much money do we spend with legal services with the school committee seeing that that's independent of our...
They do have a, they do have a line item for legal counsel.
Can somebody get that number for us, sir?
Certainly.
It should be right.
It should be in their budget that they hold on, right here.
I don't think it's spelled out in what we have.
It's in contracted services.
Contracted services?
So it's within there, so we can, we can reach out to the school to get the detail for the exact amount.
I mean, I can see, obviously, if we refer back to line item one fifty-one for legal services, for twenty eighteen, we recommended ninety-three thousand. So I would just like to see the correlation from the school committee because then we get the whole picture because that budget obviously is part of everything in detail.
Yeah, I could tell you though, that what, not exclusively, but a lot of what their council deals with is very specific. A lot of it has to do with special ed.
Predominantly special ed.
So it's, if you're thinking in lines of one attorney for both jobs, it's two different specialties.
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to add the two together so that...
Well, we thought of that once and tried, and that's how I can answer that.
Could I speak to that? It's an apple and an orange, the both individuals are attorneys, but special ed law and student law is...
Education law.
Education law is so, so specific. And the bulk of the retainer for the school attorney is consumed by special ed hearings and special ed meetings.
But it's also expulsion.
But it's all the disciplinary side and having done many of those, when you have to take significant discipline action against a student, you must have an attorney in the room, you have to today.
We'll look at that.
Can I just mail the school note?
Okay, yeah, we can.
So you're talking about a comparison between the town budget and their legal and the school budget and their legal, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
We consider...
Otherwise, yeah, it sounds like we're all in favor of promoting this request.
So you're okay with the education budget and underneath that is the school committee and it...
Yeah, why that question?
I know that, that's why I'm bringing it up because there was a little bit of discussion about the stipends that I proposed. I know that there has been a request by at least a school committee member and I don't remember who told me that, but that we look at that, oh, that we look at that as a possibility. So I'm just bringing up that. The assessors have also, I think, in your packet for next week, because I didn't have a report tonight, but they also have a letter saying that they would like to be considered to go back to the twenty-two hundred. So this is just pointing out that, you know, there are people that are not happy with the new way of doing it and want to be sure, I want to be sure you're aware of that.
And so as it relates to the school committee, the proposal that the council would support, gives them an increase and...
It does and they want more.
And, okay.
Yeah, they get an increase on Denise's budget, they got an increase anyway. All the boards that were elected, correct me if I'm wrong, the elected boards or with statutory authority, all were leveled, so everybody makes the same.
Correct. And the library board, for instance, did not get a stipend.
But they ever got one.
But they would because they, they're necessary. Called out in the...
So what's before us here is your recommendation?
Yes.
So I think at this point, as it relates to all of these, we just support the town manager's recommendation at this point.
So Culture and Back Library, we know they were under, right?
Yes.
So they're good?
So how did, how do we get to this five point seven?
It's four point four, six percent increase.
So the library, the big change is, remember we discussed that I've been reviewing the revolving accounts?
Oh, yes.
And that the library had a revolving account that really wasn't meeting the letter of the statute. So I've moved it into here. Without that, then the library is at a two percent. So this is just showing you with the revolving, whereas the FY seventeen budget right here does not include the revolving, which would be an additional fifteen thousand. The revolving's exactly the same what they had asked before and spent, I had added into here. So that's why it's skewing your number right there.
I have to ask the question, I don't want to, but I have to. In celebrations, cultural and historical.
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes.
It is. That's what I was directing to you.
I've only had it described to me as it was not put in, but then it was put as a separate warrant and then it was put in. So I thought, why, I don't understand, I understood why because I was told that people felt that parades should not be funded out of tax dollars, is what I was told.
Well, actually, the consensus of the appropriations committee was that we brought department heads and beat the hell out of them over twenty-five hundred dollar expenses.
And then pay for a parade.
And then pay for a parade. And that just didn't make sense when you've got the police chief or the fire chief coming in and telling you, gee, I need this life-saving piece of thing and you don't support it on Town Meeting floor, how could we go before Town Meeting and support a parade? So the parade never came with, I shouldn't say never, in recent years did not come with the recommendation of the appropriations committee, but that didn't stop the town, they voted it in anyway.
It either come from the floor or a special warrant.
It was always a warrant article. The selectman would put it on the warrant and then we would just have to give a recommend, the appropriations used to have to give a recommendation, we recommended against it. It got to the point where it was pretty much routine, everybody expected us to recommend against it and still vote for it, so.
So in understanding that piece of the history and hearing about this parade, probably since the day I first set foot in town to interview for the first position, it just seemed like it was something that should probably be addressed appropriately in the budget. I have to say, and I just realized maybe last, oh, Arbor Day, I realized, that this town has so much community spirit and part of it is that parade, that there's something to be said for the parade being funded within tax dollars.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I, the thought of it coming up from raising in taxation for a parade is distasteful to me, but at the same time, I know how important it is to the community, I know how important it is to the people, so it's got to be there. I mean, until the people tell me otherwise, so no.
The fireworks fall under the same scenario?
No.
No, no.
Is that JC funded?
The fireworks are privately funded, whether it's the JCs or another organization, but it's not the town. The town, what this includes is the bands for the parade. It also includes the police detail needed for that parade and that's about it.
And I'll tell you, of the budget, the thing that I probably, all this budget, one of the things I got asked the most about is, is the parade funded in the budget, honestly?
So there is.
Yeah.
I actually will.
It's got a reduced amount of revenue too with all the advertising going on in it, right?
It does not produce revenue directly into the general fund.
Where does the revenue go?
I'm assuming into the businesses, local businesses.
It generates revenue towards the towns, the general well-being of the town.
But it's not a line item that we collect.
Exactly, that's why it's not showing.
A fee or anything like that.
Recreation?
No, I'm good with that.
If you don't fund it, they'll be throwing tomatoes at you.
We don't fund it, we walk away anymore, I got a new shirt we can wear then.
You'd be lucky if it's only tomatoes.
COA?
You really don't have any questions?
Veterans?
Now, this next line is all, Sarah, is there anything, these all look like numbers that I'm pretty accustomed to seeing. Is there anything that you need to highlight on?
There's nothing that I need to highlight based on your decisions tonight. Some of those numbers are going to fluctuate a little bit since now I need to include, you know, make sure to include the appropriate amount of that for the additional staff.
And we have some changes in the insurance.
Yep, I received another insurance quote today. So I'm just incorporating that into there too, to make sure I'm more accurate because it was our best guess at the time.
Workers' cop insurance or?
It was the police and fire accident insurance policy, that one. I got the renewal notice about it, so. But I feel pretty confident with a lot of these and the health insurance overall. Our Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust did maintain the rates at a lower amount, so I think we're in pretty good shape there. so I think we're in pretty good shape there.
And isn't there something on our property insurance as well?
Yes, so the property insurance.
Underinsured.
We're underinsured in several things and the property insurance is going up, and so we're working through those and trying to incorporate them appropriately.
And, and I looked at the limits and we are really underfunded.
So when you say going up, what kind of an increase, I mean, are we talking a couple thousand dollars or are we talking a substantial amount of money?
I think we need to know once, once we look at where we should be for insuring our property, then we need to see what, I don't think he projected what the increase would be, did he?
I can't remember the, what he, he might have given an estimate, I, I'd have to look, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I do recall that he said that that will be going up over the next three years, that they're going to do incremental across their book of business, so it's something to consider. But I have requested of all departments to look at all the property and asset lists and they have to get back to me by Friday of this week to confirm what we have, so then I can make sure that I'm working with accurate numbers.
So that whole issue under insurance is subject to some fluctuation, it's fluid.
Yeah, it is, you know. It generally is anyway, because you, you do that piece in January, February and they don't have the, the rates in that.
And it's, and it's also presuming what people are going to sign up for, whether they're a family or single plans or, you know.
Yeah, you put a fudge factor in there on that one, right? Increase the.
Yeah, we usually do. No, no question.
Debt service, we're good with.
And that is just exactly from the amortization tables.
So that's, and I know I've already said this, but I just want to point out that the hundred and forty-two thousand dollars is money we've, we've spent in previous fiscal years, we're not spending this year, but we're absorbing it in other items, and I just want to make that, that point. And every year, I think if you look at the debt schedule, which was emailed out to us, amounts like that or similar to that are gonna show up for the next several years.
Correct.
Which, we had them all up, those are some pretty significant bond payments.
It helps.
So we just gotta, I don't, I don't know how we deal with it, but we've gotta try to deal with it so we can do some of those larger capital.
We need to keep it in focus for certain.
Yeah.
But we'll have the room, as each year comes.
Well, not if we keep, not if we keep absorbing it into.
No, no, yes, correct.
Into, into the budget, into.
Expenditures.
The expenditures, right, reoccurring expenditures, right.
Correct.
Personnel and, yeah.
Yep.
So then we get down to, total general fund budget is fifty-two.
Fifty-four million eight hundred and forty-nine.
I'm sorry, fifty-four eight forty-nine. So capital projects, we had.
So that's actually a little low, it's one-two, one-six, one-one-seven, because we had to include the ambulance.
Say that again, one?
One-two, one-six, one-one-seven.
So it's upwards near four percent?
Yes.
Where does that come out on the percent of the previous years, are we still using two percent as a guide or two and a half percent, I can't remember what we used?
It was originally supposed to be two percent. Give me one moment and I can tell you.
We did want to grow that though, because two percent's nowhere near adequate.
You can never, yeah, you can never address all your capital needs if it's only two percent, but.
No.
You grow it by a little bit of a percent each year.
It never used to have a fixed amount and we started, how many years ago, like three years ago?
Three, I think.
Yeah, we started with a.
That's funny, where I was, that's about when we finally did it too, where I was saying that we need to take a percentage of the budget.
Because otherwise, it was like through the budget, what was left, we might apply to capital and that just wasn't working.
Or, or we would look at our capital and say, you know what, we're, we need maybe another hundred thousand to balance things and we'd take off a hundred thousand dollar item that didn't make any sense, you know, you're balancing your budget with.
This one point two makes it two point two percent of the previous year's budget.
So we're growing a quarter percent, which is a slow growth, I was kinda hoping we'd go to two point five this year.
She wants us to spend more?
Well, you gotta give us those guidelines in January.
Exactly.
I know, it's just, overall, the, the, the capital, the reinvestment in our infrastructure is so minimal, it just bothers me that every year, the, the needs get greater because the expenditures aren't meeting the needs, so it's just, it worries them from that standpoint, that's all. That's why we started at the two and to try to grow it, so, but I'm fine with, with what you have. I would however, recommend, and I think we have the other twenty-five from the amount that we took out of the reserve, that we increase the O P E B trust to a hundred thousand dollars annual payment from seventy-five thousand.
That's fine with me, that's one that's gotta come down anyway, or go, the payment's gotta go up to.
Yeah.
It, it does have to, yeah, yeah.
Done.
Concerts or? Compensated absence, do we have a good with that, right?
Is it the compensated absence fund of fifty thousand a year, is that sufficient?
Last year, last year at our projection, if I had fully funded it last year, it would have been approximately four hundred and sixty thousand in order to fund it, last year was our first year of funding and we funded fifty thousand, so currently then I'd be short about four hundred thousand.
That's it?
Yeah, that's my little one compared to, you know, some of these other liabilities that I have that are, that are growing, so I do think that we will be able to grow it if you wanted to add more, by all means, but I don't know if that's the focus of the town council since we're already putting a lot on with these added services, if maybe that's something for our focus for next year, or perhaps with free cash, you know, nearing the end of June, that we could do that in addition with our O P E B.
Turn back a second, yeah, so the concept behind this was when the, when our liabilities were calculated, it came to four hundred and fifty, right?
Yeah.
So if we have a year, when we get to that four hundred and fifty appropriation, if we have a year where there's no draw on it, we don't need to add any money to it.
Yeah.
So essentially, it's just getting to that four hundred and fifty thousand, so for example, the fifty thousand that was done last year, it hasn't been drawn on, so we're gonna build on top of that fifty thousand with another fifty thousand, and as long as it's not drawn upon, we'll just keep building on it, if the draws start.
And we gotta look at.
Then we maybe add a little bit more or something like that, and if we have years, like I said, where it's not drawn upon, that next year, we just, yeah, it's at its balance where it needs to be to cover our liabilities.
Now, just one other thing that will impact this, so at the end of June this year, my number might not be the four sixty, and that would be as a result of, these are your contractually obligated compensated absences, so as people retire or leave and their new contracts formed, then those contracts could be written differently and therefore could have more or less that I would need to fund there, so that will fluctuate, so I just wanted you to be aware that there could be that kind of fluctuation.
So I guess the last question I have then is, we're confident we're not gonna, at this point, we probably are, we're not gonna have to raise an appropriate to cover any snow and ice deficit?
No, I should be able to cover it with interdepartmental at this time.
Perfect, awesome.
Any other pressing issues on those last few before, anything else you wanna talk about?
We didn't change a whole lot from your proposal, did we?
No, you didn't, I, I kept asking.
Stop asking.
I, I'm, yeah, I'm not asking tonight.
Cause I think we're done now.
Well, you've, you've kinda passed it over here.
You improved the overall cap.
But certainly, we can do a more in-depth presentation on the capital plan.
You have to find your capital plan.
Right, right.
But you're, you're not ready for that though.
I'm, I am not.
Geez.
Me neither.
Well, you've been doing it for a while. So I guess it's, we're in good shape then.
So where does that bring the tax rate?
Well, with the current estimate, which, like I said, I still need to put in the health insurance and just do some final tweaks, it would be approximately twenty-one sixty-three is my estimate at this time.
Aw, man, you went up two cents.
And that included the, the items we added in for the schools.
Yeah, but the fifty thousand.
What was the fifty thousand?
All the comments that you made tonight, it includes except for the benefits for the addition for the police and fire that I have to incorporate into here.
Which is probably fifty thousand, well, figure, so it's probably, it's not gonna add much to it.
And that's with no relief from tax, real estate.
Presuming that the property values stay the same. Yep.
And it's now, what, twenty-seventy-seven, Sarah?
Yes, it is, that's correct.
So you're under a dollar.
Yes, that's correct.
If we have more.
That's correct.
Real estate values stay flat, we're still under a dollar.
Which I, I would be shocked if they stay flat.
No, I would too, I'm just.
Just based on what the market's on right now.
Just in preparation.
For the next time that. I'm sitting next to it.
We're good. We're good. We don't have to bring it.
All right, so I'm really entertaining motion to adjourn, because we don't have an executive session for today.
We're, we're good, where we're at with capital, we're not gonna, you just sent something out, well, didn't you send something out on the capital?
Um, the entire requests, actually Sarah sent it out the other day.
Kathy asked about it.
Requests, what was the original, original?
Yeah, and I, and I remember now, I haven't had a chance to review it, but did you guys wanna go over it, when it was requested or, or no?
We covered generally, right?
I'm sorry?
We covered capital generally for the year, just not.
Well, we reviewed it, yeah, we reviewed what the expenditure sheet proposal is, no, I'm asking, I, I haven't had a chance to have it reviewed, we don't have to go over it tonight, because I haven't, usually I like to review stuff before I do go over it, but.
That's fine.
I just printed it out before I came here, to be honest, but I know Kathy had asked the question, I didn't know.
Do you have a specific question?
I would just wanted to see the entire list before you vetted it, that's all.
It's pretty, pretty big.
It's big.
And, and certainly we'll have a five-year plan and all of that, so we can talk about it.
Actually, it makes more sense when you put it on the five-year spread.
Yeah.
And, and to understand, so the reasoning for why we put certain things.
All of what I put there was what they requested for this year, it did not include any of the requests for the next five years. So some of the things we did push off, but then there's even more items that are not reflected on that.
So when we get to, I mean, we're looking at what, where you put in the budget, will we approve it this year anyway?
Correct.
Right.
So when we get to.
And adding the ambulance.
Right, the ambulance, just trying to figure out whether we're gonna have a use or.
So, can we just take a minute and talk about more, two things, one, while we're on that cap, I, I don't know what your plans are and I know the charter addresses this to some degree, but what I'd like to see us work on, and we kind of have a year to do it, is that maybe next year's capital will not only involve capital for that fiscal year, but a, a plan along with a finance plan for some of those larger ticket items, so, you know, so that the department's doing with those major projects coming up, can plan on it, okay, in three years from now, my project's up for bonding or, or whatever, that sort of stuff, and it just gives us a longer, it allows us to do some financial planning.
That's pretty, pretty much what's spelled out in the charter.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what I anticipate we'll be working on.
As it relates to when we, when we actually have the meeting, to, well, first off, I guess we ought to talk first about the, the public hearing, Denise is gonna present the budget at the public hearing, it's her budget.
Yep.
Sure, let Denise do it.
Well, it's.
No, I'm fine, I presented budgets for a long time.
I mean.
That's fine, I just was thinking, if it's a public hearing, I'm proposing, with, with the changes, I'll be proposing at your next meeting, really kind of the final budget, so it would still, I was trying to figure out who the owner is at that point, so I'm proposing it to you all, I would be proposing it at the public hearing as well, that's correct.
Actually, yeah, cause we can't, we're not, we can't, the council develop a budget.
We just adopt hers.
We can either say yea or nay to hers, essentially, that's what, we can reduce yours, but we can't add to it.
Right.
So it's your budget, and, and then the, the purpose of the hearing is if the residents have issues with your budget, we're supposed to listen to that and weigh everything and make adjustments and, you know, ask her to make adjustments and that sort of thing.
Right.
Okay, the other question is, when it comes to, and I wasn't sure how we're gonna do this, you might be able to help out with this, but when it comes to the actual meeting where we approve the budget, are we gonna do it in a fashion very similar to the town meeting where?
Actually, Denise and I talked about that earlier today, and that was my plan in a similar kind of fashion, but I wanna play with a couple templates and be able to give a couple options, because I wanna make sure we don't miss any aspects, because we have so many things, it's not just the general fund, but then we have the three enterprise funds, we have the revolving, we have a community preservation thing, we have, you know, there's multiple aspects.
There's a lot of regular businesses.
So I want to come up with a couple of possibilities, some very similar to what we had before and maybe some a little bit differently to see how it looks and what might be easier for people to understand, so I hope to be able to bring something like that as an example templates, maybe at the next town council meeting, so then you can all see what, what we were thinking, what Denise and I were thinking together would work well, and then you guys can give feedback at that time.
So what I was, that sounds actually right, like with kinda what I was thinking, that if we were to do it very similar fashion.
That's what we're trying to do.
And you had a page for each of the motions, give them to the council president, he can split them up among the council, here, Michael, here's the ones, motions you're gonna make that night, and then we could go through it in the same fashion that we did at town meeting, and that way it's clear for the people.
Well, that's what they're familiar with, so I, I, across the board, I'm trying not to change the processes off a whole lot from what you all are used to having for operations, there's, you know, certainly been some changes, but.
It's been so efficient, I can't understand.
And your deadline to adopt is four weeks from tomorrow night, so there is time, it's June first, so.
Okay.
We should be able to do it sooner than that, I don't think.
Does.
Well, the twenty-third.
Well, the twenty-third's the public.
There's a hearing.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it the night of the public hearing.
Adopted?
No, we had it.
It's like by the first, so you could do it before then.
We had a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, there was one after that too that we talked about.
The twenty-third is the next, the next meeting that we would have, the, our regular meeting that night and recessed at seven, have the public hearing for all, setting the water and sewer and the, the regular budget, does the board, does the school board have to have a public hearing as well, would we be doing that as well that night?
Nope.
It's, it's all rolled into my.
It's you, one night long. Twenty times past, it occurred on the same evening.
Yeah, typically it was, I presented and they presented, so I did the town's budget, they did the school department budget, and then we opened the floor for.
So we kinda need to coordinate that as well.
Capital would, whoever was chairman of capital would present the capital budget.
So we'll do it at all on the twenty-third, so.
It's gonna be on the same.
So we need to let them.
Thank you.
Good, so, so then the next meeting that we, we talked about this morning, or yesterday, whatever, was June first, just to have it right on the first, which is a Thursday night, so that we make the deadline.
But we needed a two-week period to post the public hearing notice, so that's where we ended up, we started, but it was this week basically, we came out and said, okay, we got fourteen days we have to post twice, right?
June first is on a Thursday?
Yes.
There's nothing preventing us from on Tuesday night?
Yeah, it said by, by.
By June first, so we meet at our regular meeting, can be on the agenda of our.
When we look, when you have a regular scheduled meeting that night.
Because it's the end of May still.
Well, it might not be.
So it's like a fifth meeting.
But it can be a Tuesday, or it is, but it can be a Tuesday night meeting rather than a Thursday night.
Yeah, we looked, we just went to the next, whatever, I forget how we, cause there wasn't a regularly scheduled meeting between the twenty-third and the first, or whatever, so we just, that hasn't been.
But the council can decide that.
Sure, it's not so set still, it's just, we figured, we had a week to think about what, feedback, whatever.
Well, I thought you were gonna have more people here tonight, so I thought if you and I set up the timeline, that we could.
Right, cause that's what, one of the things we talked about was if you have a lot of feedback at the public hearing.
We need a little bit of time to.
Right.
Feedback, come back.
That's why you had that same.
Yeah, exactly, typically you don't, but this being the first year of the council Yeah, exactly. Typically, you don't, but this being the first year of the council and the impact it's had.
That was what it was, Eric, because if we had a lot of feedback and we needed to make changes, we set the adoption date for the 1st.
Okay.
Because if we needed to meet.
To give room for the changes.
Because if we needed to meet in between to adopt the thing, have them make changes, and then come back and.
Yeah, okay.
Whatever. That was sort of how.
It's still going to be pretty tight.
We're on a tight.
And that's all based on public comment, really.
Right.
So maybe that won't be an obstacle.
Are we meet, I got to, are we meeting?
The 9th and the 23rd.
9th and 23rd.
Yeah, 9th is the second Tuesday of May.
Okay, so we're not meeting the 16th. Good. There's a lot of town that day, so. Perfect. Awesome. Okay, now I'll make a motion.
Okay, there you go. Some moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's move to the second. Any further discussion? Here's none in favor?
Aye.